Ms. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Kinzanna?
Here.
Ms. Carnese?
Here.
Ms. Constantina?
Here.
Ms. Gibson?
Here.
Ms. Hall?
Here.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Ms. Stiles?
Here.
And Ms. Whitwell?
Here.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our public voting meeting. Can everybody hear us okay? I know last time we got together... Can we move these closer to us at all?
A huge hand. They're really meant to just report. Use the hand.
Can everybody hear me now? Sorry we're late. We were in executive session, and my apologies. Also, the musical practices tonight. We could not move into the auditorium. So I thank you for coming here. Some standing room only. First order of business is a discussion item. Dr. Corin, who you've all probably known, has been working on a presentation on reconfiguration. Dr. Corin?
Thank you very much. Again, I want to thank the board for allowing me to go through this presentation. The purpose again for this presentation was to assist the superintendent board the process of refreshing and refraining the topic of reconfiguration. The... Hang on just one second. I was not to actually delve into finances or just personnel in detail to gather information. Over twenty-some days, working part-time and communicating with Mr. Souls and actually every board member, I was able to gather information, put it together, and that's this presentation. The filter of the entire presentation was the mission statement of the school district and various items. The first group would be enrollment trends, and I did add the heritage conference and capacity trends. This is too small. This will be posted on the website. Or this will be posted on the website by tomorrow, Mr. Souls, I think, this presentation. But since this is so small, I'll just zoom in on the highlighted last five years. In the last five years, you can see that I looked, I grouped this as the two elementary schools, K-5, and then the two campus schools, 6th and 12th. And over that fifteen-and-a-half-year period, there was a total reduction of students that exceeds thirty-three percent. So that's what that is. And that allows you, that carries over the last five years from the previous slide. The decline just in the last five years is six percent enrollment. That coupled with going to the PDE website, taking information that had been posted on the PDE website, we see that the instructional expense is continuing to rise, and the enrollment is on a decline. To overlay those two graphs, you can see that that's a trend that could spell issues in the future. And you bring up the topic of opportunity cost, and that's the, perhaps, the benefits lost when pursuing one particular course instead of another. The definition of instructional expense is taken from PDE there. Also, that law online from the Future Ready PA or Future Ready Index website, you can see the... About almost sixty percent of the instruction is the total cost, and so you would want to maximize that, especially if you were a property owner and a taxpayer to the district for the school district. The instructional cost about sixty percent. Looking at the heritage conference numbers, and again, this is small, but I'll look to the next slide and I've taken liberty there. But Blairsville and Salzburg are listed in the top two on purpose. And then the rest of the heritage conference PIAA gender numbers. And this is for the interstationalistic schedule for the 2021 and 2122 cycle. So for the next two years. That was available online as well. I did combine the numbers of Blairsville and Salzburg in this slide just to get an idea. If you would do that according to the numbers submitted to the PIAA in October of 2019, you'll see that the combined enrollment of Blairsville and Salzburg boys would be listed at 166, would be the highest boys enrollment in the heritage conference. And if you did it for the females, the girls would be second, only to Gabrielle Heitz, who is the newest member starting in 2021 of the conference.
Dr. Corin, I have a question about that previous slide. Now, that is the boys and girls that could possibly play, not their current sports right now.
That is correct. That is how the PIAA establishes their classifications. And so in October, every second year, they ask for enrollments, and then that goes for the next two-year cycle.
And this is boys, nines, or twelves?
It is, no. The number that is reported into this one, nine through eleven, or eight?
Oh, yeah.
Nine, ten, eleven.
Eight, nine, ten, eleven?
No, no. Nine, ten, and eleven. It does not count the existing seniors in October of 2019. Doesn't count the seniors because they're out. That's the rules that the PIAA has set up. It's top three grades. And everybody reports that.
Everybody?
If you want to...
All schools. Those are all the schools that are in the conference.
If you want to play and be a sanctioned PIAA member, you have to report that. And also taken from the PDE website, you'll see that you have cost in building operation and maintenance, and that's taken from the AFRs that have been posted. And the most recent post on the PDE website is the 1718 AFR. Transportation is an issue here because of the spread east and west and the number of miles that make up the school district. And in past studies, didn't really do anything different here, but in past studies, they look to try to maximize reimbursement, minimize time. I did add, this was a past study, five years ago, and there is not much change there. But what I did ask, because in talking to many people this world was concerned, was the safety of school buses. And I did add this from the 2017 Department of Transportation and the, actually, the percentage of crashes per miles driven is... We can be thankful that the those that are responsible for transportation of K-12 students in Pennsylvania do a very, very nice job. Very safe job. Another item that was shared with me was that perhaps the district was too large in square miles. And so going to the various websites, because I found differences in the report of square miles for Blairsville-Salzburg. The PA Future Ready Index District Vast Facts reports that Blairsville-Salzburg is 110.85 square miles. As I just looked and found that Blairsville-Salzburg ranks 135 out of 499 school districts, and that there are many larger, the largest in the state is Keystone Central. Armstrong County is second or third. But I picked and I chose school districts in District Six, two are in our county, or District Five, or regional school districts that have more miles and only one high school. That's my choice of making that. And then Mr. Souls supplied the number of students that currently reside in the township two boroughs for that slide to be added as well to keep it kind of, keep that in position. The next group of slides looked at scheduling. And if you've ever... Scheduling is a challenge, and scheduling poses some significant challenges to the administrators. First, you see class size. And actually, I should commend you that fifty, almost fifty-two percent of all the sections and all the classes, six through twelve, in the district, not counting many special ed, not counting ICTC, not counting study halls, has fifteen or less students. Teachers, and after being a teacher for forty-some years, would definitely enjoy that student load. There is eighteen percent of the district's classes that have five or fewer school students in the class. Again, this is no lunch, no study halls counted, no ICTC, no sergeant students. Then with this number of students, looking at single-course offerings, which administrators refer to as simpletons, when scheduling the school, the higher the number of single-course offerings, there is also then a direct relationship to the amount of restriction that a student has in the ability to take all the courses that he or she might desire. Even though that you have many courses, having a single-course offering creates difficulty for the administrator. And you can see that you have over a hundred such sections that are single-course offerings right now. The advanced placement in college and high school, I concur, these normally are single-course offerings. And there is quite a list here of English offerings for Salzburg. There were eighteen AP and college and high school offerings. And in Blairsville, there were twelve college and high school and AP offerings. AP actually is only US history and world history at both campuses. This next is just to get you an idea. Blairsville-Salzburg has elected courses from the booklet from eighty-five. A neighbor, Greenbrook, seven, one-eleven. Armstrong, one-hundred-and-six. Not as much of a point here. It's just a comparison. In talking to many people and listening to the administrators and main board members, there was a concern about, oh, reconfiguration means that perhaps the high school would be together. Then would I not think that the high school would become too big? Well, back in the eighties, then actually, all the work was done in the nineties. There was significant work done in what they call the effective schools research. And in effective schools research, they said somewhat of the sweet spot of a high school, nine through twelve, would be the enrollment of students between six and nine hundred students. You get, you are nine hundred, which would be to seventy-some, a grade level, the school gets much too big, and it's easy to fall through the cracks. At one-fifty a grade level, you come in the sweet spot, and that's the research that was done. Valerie Lee, who not only wrote a few books, but also, I quote here, from University of Michigan, was a proponent of the effective schools research. Now, I'm just going to share an update of the test scores. The, and I did it to show a trend, not to point out this one particular grade level in this one particular score. I didn't want to do that. So here you see trends. And what this is, is this is a four-year bar graph. Blairsville is on the left. Blairsville ELA, Blairsville Math. In the middle, Blairsville Science, which only fourth graders say is there. And then on the right-hand side, we have Salzburg Elementary, ELA, Salzburg Elementary Math, and Salzburg Elementary, the science scores. But this gives you an idea of the average reported from PDE, the total grades three, four, and five proficient and advanced students. This slide looks at six, seven, eight. Six, seven, eight corresponds with the middle school of both campuses. And it is the, the blue indicates this year of 2016. And of course, far right of each grouping of four, the orange is 2019. Gives you an idea of the percent of all students who took the test that were proficient or, and advanced, proficient and advanced. When I overlap those, and again, on the individual slide, you can see the elementary have tall against the colors. And then the black cross lines would be the middle school. And middle school decreases for a multitude of reasons. You know, it decreases for a multitude of reasons. But that's the combined three through eight as the scores. Looking at the Keystone scores, this is both schools, high school schools, percentage of students for the years sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, who were reported as proficient and advanced. And the, it's a little difficult to see, but it's, I laid Blairsville and Salzburg onto this graph, but if you take one of them out, this is the Blairsville graph. Algebra is blue, Bio is red, and the ELA literature is the beige color. I apologize, I have problems with colors. And this is the Salzburg four-year average of all students taking the Keystone's of Algebra, Bio, and ELA. Percentage of students proficient and advanced. Also part of this was the speech delivery and gaining common themes or threads of the responses. And I referred to that as a perceptual survey and asking whether or not you supported reconfiguration or do you support it, do you wish to remain status quo or as it is? The three common themes are located on the left-hand side. The three most common threads are located on the right-hand side for those that wanted to remain status quo. Then we moved forward so that we could try to draw some common ground in gathering the common themes. And on the left-hand side was an area of those that were interviewed where they were extremely proud or highly satisfied of this performance in the school district. And overwhelming amount of people responded that they thought that they were the teachers, the people, caring administrators, and they were happy with the college and high school courses, which is a great benefit. And then you can see items two and three. On the other side, areas that could be, that could be addressed or improved or betterment would be more positive communication and sharing PR in and among both those in this district and beyond. And then the other two main common threads. Finally, we come to the areas and desires that the individuals, the nine board members and the administrators and representatives of the associations, those are the people that I spoke to, looked for areas and desires to provide growth and/or to become proactive enhancements for the school district. And we can see those main common threads on the left. And if there was anything else to add, some summary statements on the right-hand side. So with all of this data, again, the question comes up, and that question is, with this updated refreshed data, maybe different, having different pieces of the pie, what does the board do? Does it remain status quo with two elementary, two middle school, two high school? Or two middle, two elementary, one high school? Two elementary, one middle, one high school? Or one elementary, one middle, and one high school? And as I was directed, I'm not here to make any recommendation or anything like that. I'm just sharing what these particular options are available to the board. And with each and every question, there is what researchers call an opportunity cost. And the opportunity cost is what you would miss, perhaps, if you don't make a decision. You gain with items from the decision you make, but you may also not gain from not making a different decision. It's an opportunity cost. I'm sure somebody smarter and maybe I could ask Alexa and get a more succinct explanation of that, but that would be that. Overall view here is that what I have found through the crowds, small communities exist, no one's doing anything incorrectly. I don't see that at all. There is always room for improvement. I do know that if you've only seen one model work, you really are not always as attuned to what the other options are than if you see multiple models. One item to be somewhat concerned is, as I shared before, is the constant work and talk about Senate, the proposed Senate Bill 76, which the General Assembly would like to get passed because that would eliminate property tax. And that's a concern, and should be, remain a concern because that is the main manner and method in which school districts, all school districts in the state, receive their local revenue. And I don't know whether or not that will pass or not, but in the Senate, last term or last session, that was a 24-24 vote, and they are working on it again. Other areas, speaking with many people, they said what we could do to really improve would be follow these things, work on better alignment. I see tonight you are working on a cyber decision. And, you know, that, that was clear. Opportunities to import in programs beyond what ICTC provides now. And ICTC provides thirteen programs. Here are just nine samples of Western Pennsylvania technical centers running programs that ICTC doesn't provide. Okay? And then this list and this next list on the next slide are all backed by research to increase and enhance SAM opportunities, specifically the project Leadway. And I know Mr. Souls had told me that they were including that into the PA Smart Grant opportunity to write that, to reintroduce full-time librarian, element PR teacher, and the list goes on. Increase and enhance the rigorous course offerings with more advanced placement or AP options. This list is, you know, studies who show that students in classes that work together in groups, both in SAM ability or mixed ability groupings, the students grow an awful lot, and it has a positive impact on student achievement. And I say that because in the back of my mind, I relate back to eighteen percent of the classes have five or less students. And, you know, it causes one to ponder. And that student engagement is something, especially in a secondary building. And so I finished the last, when I handed this to the board, with the educational expectations. What are the board's educational expectations? And to reflect on it as a school district because there are school board in like one district. And I should remember that concludes my report.
I have some questions.
The board members asked me some questions. If you don't mind.
Okay, I have some questions in regard to the report that was put together. And just to start off, I guess I misunderstood yours of what was to be performed. And I think when we, when we have an executive session and we talk in executive session, I asked you the question about the financial aspect of the consolidation because when you're moving forward with and undertaking consolidation, I would think that education is one part of it, but the financial end piece of it is the other part. And it was also my understanding during our meeting that there was, you indicated that you had talked to, you listened to administrators, and you talked to the board. Did you talk to administrators on both ends of the district?
Yes.
Everyone? Okay, principals and everything? Okay. But one thing that bothered me about this presentation is you did not have any conversation with the business manager, which is key to consolidation. I mean, you would need to know the finances of the district. So that leads me to the question in your report. How confident are you in your numbers that you presented from PDE? That you pulled this data from PD? How confident are you in this?
I am a hundred percent confident in those numbers because it's taken from the PDE website.
Okay, so would that be...
So what PDE website has and what is there are the same.
Okay, so if there was stuff, and sitting on the board for the last eight years and dealing with three business managers, there was stuff that was not reported, was not reported properly. And I'm not the accountant, but if I may ask the accountant, the business manager, there was stuff that was not booked. We've had a conversation about this many meetings, financial discussion, about items that were not booked properly. Did everything, was everything translated to PD properly? I guess is my question. Because we're showing a $2 million increase in instructional cost from sixteen and seventeen, and then all of a sudden seventeen, eighteen, we have a $2 million increase. What caused that? Because I don't know if we got it. Do you know what caused that? The $2 million increase?
I placed the definition of instructional cost is mostly in the world of business management. She knows more than I do. It's all, there are all expenses in the 1,000 range of the first four numbers or the sixteen numbers of the... There are sixteen numbers that go into each account manager. Am I correct?
There's nine segments.
Nine segments. So that's what PDE sorted out. But actually, the question that this is for.
Yeah, because like I said, we have this data, and when everybody's looking at this data, it's, you're looking at it going, wow, we have a $2 million increase. data, it's, you look at it, you want, wow, we have a $2 million increase in instructional costs from 15, 16, and then to 17, 18, there's a $2 million increase. I'd like, can you explain that?
I can speak to that. In prior years, the net number was booked for cyber schools, so the reimbursement from the state would have been getting the revenue, and then the expenditure would have been normally booked. However, in prior years, it was just compressed together. So about $1.5 million weren't booked to the actual education expense because it was a net number that was booked, so.
So what you're saying is PDE did not have, this data would be inaccurate. There was not a $2 million increase in instructional costs. Is that correct?
Because of the way certain things were booked. And then in addition to that, sometimes textbooks or different items were booked to a balance sheet account and capitalized, and sometimes they were booked to support services rather than educational expenses. So really, that understated the overall expenditures for education.
So is it safe to say, is it safe to say that this increase of $2 million from 2015 through 18 is not accurate? If you were looking at this graph, according to the stuff that was not booked properly, it would have been something like a flat line. Am I correct in that?
Without doing the entire analysis, I would say that it probably is a little bit misleading because of the way the data was reported.
That data was approved. Those financial reports were audited and approved for those fiscal years.
Okay, that is a point that we must remember. PDE gets the audits. Each local audit of each school district, and PDE accepts the audits. And the board then is presented with both the audit and the finance. So it's not me to say if it's correct or incorrect, accurate to a penny or not, it's what was audited and what was reported. Those are the years that I reported on financial graphs were only what is on the reported, audited numbers.
Okay, and whether they accepted it or not, to my point, is stuff was not booked properly. Whether they accepted it or not, I mean, there's a two, we're showing a $2 million increase, and I'm saying that according to what the business manager's saying, stuff was not booked properly. So that increase would not be a $2 million increase.
And that's a valid point, but it's two different subjects. So what Dr. Korn researched and got off the PDE site is accurate. With that measure, what you're countering, is that data correct that was reported from our previous business manager?
Correct.
So if Mrs. Melinger is finding that there are miscalculations from before, then that needs to be brought up with PDE about how we feel our audit findings that were accepted and approved in previous years might not be correct. That's what you're saying?
Yeah, exactly. And what I'm saying is this report, according to that, is not accurate. There was not a $2 million increase.
The one line of whether it increased $2 million over two years or not is subject to, well, review as well, and that's a big issue.
You pulled the information from PDE, but we did not.
Wake up, please.
Okay, that is a correct statement, but that was not the purpose of refreshing and reframing this particular presentation. It was, that's not my expertise to re-audit the school books. So I get the point. I think the numbers that we used from PDE are the numbers that were there.
Right, and sometimes, I guess that's why I was a little disheartened, disappointed that a conversation did not take place with the business manager, and maybe these numbers could have been a little bit more accurate than...
But how would he know? Because he just reported that, how would he know those numbers aren't accurate? He has to assume that what's been approved and booked is accurate.
But you were not in a conversation with the business manager.
He steered away from finance, remember? He steered away from the money and only focused on the academics.
And like I said, and that's, and I'll take it for granted, I was very misled on his portion, I mean, what his, what he was instructed to do as far as his work on consolidation. Because would you agree that the financial piece of consolidation is crucially important to consolidation? I mean, it's...
I agree it is, but you need to find out where the board stands on the idea of reconfiguration. If it's status quo, then you don't need to do that study. If it's six through 12, or seven through 12, or K through 12, once the board decides what they want to do, then you do your financial study. Can't, it would be a waste of time.
The board took an action to have Dr. Korn do an analysis to provide information to the board at this point. There is an action item this evening that would place a 780 hearing and go through the process of deliberating on this issue. So at that hearing, the board will provide certain information, look at the different scenarios, status quo, closing of certain buildings, keeping certain buildings open, consolidation, and so forth. And then there will be a 90-day period to gather even additional information to provide before they take an action. So as, again, this is the beginning of that, not the end of the process. So I think that's what the board is trying to do, is get that information. I'll make sure we're gathering all the information that's needed for the board to make an educated decision on how they plan on moving forward.
So Rick, in other words, we're going to hire another consultant to give us the financial end of this? Is that what you're saying?
That hasn't been discussed.
Well, I was under the impression, like Holly was, that he was going to do the whole thing, the financial aspect. This is a business, Rick, and you know it as well as all of us. So where's our money going? We want to know what we're doing with this money. We want to know what it's going to cause us. Did you go to Salzburg and ask them the monthly bills? Did you come to Blairsville and ask them the monthly bills? Do we do any of that?
Not yet.
And why are we voting on a hearing?
That's the next step. That's the next step. You do the hearing, and then...
Rick, would we be included in the decision this time more than we were when we were not included in the decision to our Dr. Cohen? So would we be...
When it comes to financial, that would be our administration question.
So my next question, and I guess that would be the same that I asked about the instructional, I mean, yeah, the instructional costs. So the instructional expenses, is that the same case? Was there, and you took the figures from PDE, is there any, Angela, is there any deviation in the instructional expenses?
It would be the same answer. There's some things that were booked in the balance sheet rather than in the income statement, so those assets, things such as textbooks were depreciated rather than being expensed in the year they were purchased.
On the...
You're asking textbooks can be put under FAFD?
By direction of our accountants, we're supposed to expense them in education expenses the year they purchased. Previously, they were booked correctly, so really, there were two different pieces because one is a function of teaching, and the other function is support services.
So the building capacity on the buildings, the expenses, the AFR, that those numbers on operation and maintenance of plant service, can you speak to that increase?
What, what year?
That was on Dr. Korn's report from 15 to 16, and then he had a timeline from 17 and 18, and he showed an increase. Uh, this one doesn't have a number. Page 12, page 12.
Building capacity, building O and M?
Yes.
Building capacity, building O and M, O and M.
That's the operations of maintenance and plant service.
Okay, so you're asking about the 2015-16 number?
That's correct.
2.65?
Yes.
Will you speak up, please, so we can hear?
She's asking about the difference between 2015, 2016, and then, and the graph, he has the graph going up for 2017, 18. But I think it is a little bit misleading because really, that's not, is it $50,000? And the graphic makes it appear like it's a really steep incline, when really, that's not too much, so.
Can you bring that up on there so that people can see what she's talking about, please?
There's no hidden agenda. I'm just asking questions. So obviously, there's a hidden agenda now because I'm asking you questions. Go ahead.
Yeah, so it goes from $2,650,000 to $2,710,000, and it does look like it's a big jump, doesn't it, only $50,000?
Yeah, I originally, I thought that was a really...
My question is, are those, how was the, if those other things were not booked properly in the previous years from previous business managers, is there, what's the accuracy of this operations and maintenance of plant service? Was there, was this stuff booked properly?
I can't speak to all of it, but I can say that there was a lot of things booked in one account, and then moved at the end of the year, so without going through the exact detail, it'd be hard. And all of the expenses weren't necessarily written in the general fund. We had a different fund that was just on a spreadsheet. So we have worked with the books and written around the system, we reported all the...
So the issue is whether, in the Y axis, if the increments are two parts together, it showed a steep increase, as opposed to the increments were further apart, it'd be a less of a steep increase.
And I understand it's just a chart, but I'm asking about the accuracy of the chart. Because I think, I think that it's been acknowledged at this point, that the numbers that were reported to PDE were reported via the audit, but stuff was not booked properly. So it's looking like we have a $2 million increase from 2015 through present. I think that's...
You make a valid point, but I also say this is the first time I've heard that our previous audits that were approved are not accurate.
Well, whenever we were, we are meeting after meetings, but you mean, athletic stuff happening on the board.
Well, yes, we've talked about that, but that was all being resolved for the current year and past. I've never heard anything about past years being improved.
So would this not have an effect on, if stuff is being booked properly right now in 17 and 18?
But this data doesn't include this year. Actually, we don't even have our audit report done until last year. This has to be 15, 16, 17, 18.
So 16, 17, 17, 18, stuff was not booked?
17, 18 was the last approved audit we had done. So the 18, 19 is not done yet, of course, we're in 19, 20.
So my last question, on page 32, under the interview data, the transition process would be essential with good planning for any change? I just, I just want to comment on that because that is a very true statement, and I don't believe, moving forward at this point right now, with the hearing on deck or vote or public hearing, that there's been any kind of good planning done at this point. And with that being said, this was the same reason why when past, present, and future came up before, several years back, that I voted no, because there was a lot of stuff that was presented before the board that there was no answers to, like, do you have enough classroom to accommodate the two districts being put together? Is there enough classrooms? We had this conversation in executive session last week, and Jeff talked about moving classrooms, possibly getting rid of the boys in the yellow-green room to make room for the consolidation and possibly a life skills, the apartment and the life skills class being removed to make room for the transition. We don't know the expenses, we don't know the busing expenses, none of that stuff has been brought forth. So with that being said, to convince me that this is the proper thing to do right now, and I understand this is public education and not private education, and I see the numbers, I get it, but like I said, all the components are not in place, and there's no way to... And we have a comprehensive plan review coming up, and let me ask you this, Jeff. In that comprehensive review, the board, we're reviewing our comprehensive plan, has there been any provisions made to include consolidation in the comprehensive plan? Because I have the PDE for the taxpayers of the Blairsville-Salzburg School District to weigh in on consolidation.
Within the comprehensive plan, we're going to look mainly at the instruction, how we test students, our success, and so forth. It really has no bearing as to...
Well, moving forward, you wouldn't want to have, you wouldn't want to have conversation with the constituents about the consolidation of this...
That's fine, but that's what drives the comprehensive plan.
And is that comprehensive plan scheduled to be in the...
Not till November, November. We have to prove it in October, we're submitting it in November.
The five-year, you're just going your year.
No, this is, this is the new one being written. It'll be reviewed in three years, then it'll be redone in six.
All right, I don't have any more questions on the plan right now.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you, Dr. Korn.